All right, welcome everybody here. Seeing for 27 meetings for those of you keeping track, 27. Looks like I've got 16 witnesses on our sheet. We're gonna do our best to get through these. As I say that, I'm gonna remind those 16 individuals to be certain. If you can come forward, we did real good the other evening with new information. We do appreciate that. It does help to move these meetings along. We're trying to get them done. You guys wanna get some closure, whatever your feelings are with this? So we're trying our best to do that. With that, Magenta Kaiser, can you please come forward? On deck, Megan Dassel. Good, get that wrong. All right, Mr. Kaiser, can you please be sworn in? Affirmal. All right. Do solemn and sincerely declare and affirm that the testimony you shall give in this case now and here will be the truth and nothing but the truth nor that you suffer the pains and penalties of perjury. All right, please state your name and address for the court order and then go ahead and begin.
Magenta Kaiser, Exhibit 27-215 East 1,000 North Road.
Mr. Kaiser, I think counsel stood with it. For the record, you live at, um, at Route 394 and exhibit 16B. Showing you what has been previously marked as plain exhibit 16B. Can you go to the second page and see R394? And under the color, 1,000 hertz, I think she had it for you. Can you tell me what the decibel level is?
Forty point seven.
Okay, and if you go back two further pages, it's actually the same thing. The first one was for 1.7, GE 1.79100 turbines. And then if you go to R394, two pages later, GE 1.72-103 turbines. What's the 1,000 hertz decibel level of your property?
Forty point six.
Okay. And if you go down to the next page, which is with the new level of TDs, can you tell me what your decibel level is again at 500 hertz? Or 1,000 hertz, excuse me?
Forty point six.
Okay, and then two pages later, could you tell me again, this is again with the 103 meter blade, what's the hertz of that property? The dead line, 500 hertz. What's the decibels in 1,000 hertz on competition?
Forty point four.
Okay. Who do you live at, 27-215 East 1,000 North Road?
My wife and children, we have four children.
Okay, and do you work in this immediate area or do you work somewhere else?
I work in Boone.
And who do you work for in Boone?
State Farm.
And how many acres of property do you have at your residence?
Four point seven.
And how many, do you know how many turbines are supposed to be within a mile of your own?
Six.
And you know what directions those are from your own?
Um, north, northeast, northwest. Southeast, southwest.
And do you farm land located at 27-215 East 1,000 North Road?
No.
Do you operate any type of business out of that property?
No.
So you just utilize it for your residence, that's it?
That's correct.
Showing you what has been marked as UC LC exhibit 134. Is this an aerial of the property you live at?
Yes.
And can you tell us approximately how many feet, yards, et cetera, maybe between your home and the property line of the east?
Probably 100 feet.
Okay, and how about to the north?
Fifty feet.
How about to the west?
Like 200 feet.
And how about to the south?
Forty, 800 feet.
And, um... I see some other buildings on your property. Or what buildings are on your property besides your home, anything else?
Yeah, we have a little, a small little chicken shed, we have a pool building.
A chicken shed and a house?
A pool building.
Pool. Okay, and in the chicken shed, is there any farm building that you was?
No.
I have nothing for it, thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Oh, my, Mr. Kaiser, we have to wait for questions.
Do you have the local government, local school districts, any questions, Mr. Kaiser? Mr. Blazer, any questions?
Just a few, Mr. Kaiser. Hi, Mr. Kaiser. Who is Brett Guttman?
Brett Guttman, he owned the house before we bought it.
I see, yes. And your property is classified as farm with buildings or abandoned, you are an merchant.
Sure.
Yes, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Looking at the, not exactly zoomed in, but if we could look at this picture, exhibit 134. Is your house the building of the pram root, kind of like the northwest?
The house is located directly, you see the root, the ground, you see the lane going up and then the ground and root?
Yes.
The house is directly north from that.
Okay. It looks like there's two buildings, there's two buildings that are kind of angled from each other.
Yeah, it's just one, it's the house and garage.
Okay. And as you're heading north up the drive, what are those three round structures that you passed before you met your house?
Those are bins, grain bins.
I'm not far from those, you'll have to ask me if I know what those are. And then, uh, just north, it's in the east of the grain bins, what's that building?
That's the pool building.
And what's in the pool building?
Just right now, there's some old wood that was left over from farming for the county.
And then if we keep going north, from the pool building, immediately northeast of your house, you see there's another structure over there?
Yeah.
What is that?
That's the chicken shed.
The chicken shed, okay. And then if we keep going straight north from your, from your house, it looks like there's a rectangular empty area there, what is that?
That's just part of the field. Our property is about 50 feet north of the house and it's, it's fields.
Okay, sure. And then if we go immediately east of your house, between the home barn and the chicken shed, that, that whole building, what is that?
Um, that's part of, that's part of our property.
What's it used for?
And it's also part of the field.
Part of the field?
So, yeah.
Okay, that's all. Anybody in the audience with questions, Mr. Kaiser? DBA, do you have any questions? Did you have a question? All right.
How many acres did you show you have on your property?
Oh, sorry, down south. And how many?
Four foot seven.
And from what I can see on the map, the, the area that looks like a little field in the back? Is that, what's that plan, what do you use for it?
You mean residential?
Yeah.
Par否s? Yes, par否s.
Okay. Do you have any plans to rent out some of the farm?
No, we don't own that. We own about 50 feet north of the house.
Okay, thanks.
DBA, county council, county staff.
You guys have something back here?
Bye-bye.
I have a quick couple of questions. How long have you lived on this property?
Since September.
Of 2014. Were you aware of wind turbines coming in when you bought the property?
I, we did not even let any thought. I don't know that we were aware, I mean, it certainly wasn't something that we thought about.
Okay, thanks, that was just curious.
Okay, I didn't, didn't burden miss anybody else today. All right, we're good, we're through everybody. Mr. Kaiser, thank you. Megan Dassel.
Mr. Chair, just one second, we're labeling the last exhibit, it wasn't, so it makes it easier for you.
All right, just so we know who's on deck, Ruth Wessels. Ruth Wessels will be at for Megan. Thank you. You got it, thank you. Do you have another tip? Okay, Megan, are you ready?
Yeah, let me take this. Can you guys hear me okay?
All right, please raise your hand. Do solemn and swear a testimony, shall give in this case now and here, shall give you the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth, so if you have, all right. State your name and address for the court order and then go ahead and begin.
Megan Dassel, Page 0155 East 1100 North Road, Chatsworth, Illinois. I'm not in the dynamic of the speaker as my husband was, so you guys have to bear with me this evening. Before I begin, I want to give you a little background information on myself. I have a degree in natural resources management and another in zoology, which is just a fancy term for wildlife management. I work full-time here in Livingston County as a soil conservation technician, and I spend my days assisting our landlords and farmers with evaluating resource concerns they might have on their land and helping them to develop a plan to protect the soil, water, wildlife resources they are entrusted to protect while helping them to improve their farming operations. My job involves everything from engineering and design work to wildlife habitat development, contract management, and conservation plant development. During this presentation, I'd like to cover a few topics. The impacts this project might have to aerial application in our area, the impacts to air medical transport, impacts to our cultural resources. I'll briefly touch on the Livingston County Soil and Water Natural Resources Report, and I'd also like to give a personal statement. I'd first like to interview to the topic of precision aerial application, some people call it drop dusting, and discuss the impacts that this proposed wind energy project might have on its use in our area. I've presented this information to our county board previously at the Edith Zoney Committee meeting in September of last year, but I was informed that I need to provide this information to the zoning board of O'Keels as well. Aerial application can include everything from the use of pesticides, fertilizer, and even the use of seed cover crops. It's becoming increasingly important for agriculture due to the ever-rising need to be efficient while helping to protect our environment. It's an efficient and economical tool when any producer wants to gain the biggest bang in their butt and accomplish as much as they can each day. They are at the mercy of so many things and need all the tools they can get to be productive and successful. Sometimes aerial application is the only tool available to control pests, disease, or to get our cover crops seeded with enough time, with enough growing season, less than them to become second. Timing is everything. Cover crops are becoming a very important component in many agricultural operations. They've been around for many years, but are now becoming more mainstream. They help protect our soil from erosion, treat soil compaction, capture and recycle nutrients, and generally improve the health of the soil by increasing our organic matter and help manage our soil moisture. Due to time constraint, I'm not going to get into the Illinois nutrient loss reduction strategy. Everyone in this room is aware of the hypoxic or dead zone in both Mexico. I totally believe many of the producers and landlords in this audience are well aware of the increasing planetary efforts to reduce the amount of nutrients that run off our farms and into our water sources that contribute to the degradation of the Gulf. And I know that they are aware that if you want to get ahead of this, this problem before regulations come down the pipe. Cover crops are one of the tools outlined in the nutrient loss reduction strategy, and they will play a large role in helping us meet the goals outlined earlier in the morning. So how does all of this relate to the proposed wind farm? The proposed wind farm will take aerial application options away from many producers in our area and/or cause others to incur additional expenses they never had before. I've been in contact with two of the aerial application companies that serve our area, Pontiac Flying Service and Shirts Aerial. Both companies agree that the introduction of a wind energy project leaves the area, some of the acres in the area inaccessible by aircraft and adds a level of complexity to the remaining accessible acres that was not present before a wind farm started on our landscape. Mr. Shirts also feels that added hazards and turbines leaves the county open to vicarious liability. He's presented at a number of zoning hearings in the past, but feels that his concerns are called.
Mr. Chairman, I have to object that these people are going to testify in this hearing. I don't think it's appropriate for this witness to be submitting comments on the, we've been through this multiple times in this hearing.
No, wait a second. We've made this station between experts and non-experts, and she is just submitting documents that bet this up in statements that have been provided. These are not experts, they're people in the business. We've heard many of Mr. Blazer's clients talk about hearsay and, uh, whose hearsay put it in this issue? It's nothing different than that.
I'll, I'm sorry. I'll remind you, Mr. Chairman, that you made this specific ruling quite some time ago. I quoted it twice earlier, the two things I submitted, and this girl went and asked you the same question, and you made it very, very clear, if someone wants to submit a comment or anything like that, they have to come in here and be sworn.
This is no different, this is, I mean, let's, let's break it down, experts versus non-experts. Experts, you've made a ruling, this is very, that we couldn't do this. These are non-experts, and this is consistent with the ruling allowing hearsay throughout this hearing, that Mr. Harms, Espazak, all of them put in hearsay that's very similar to this. They put in things about finances, et cetera, that were exactly allowed, which was almost exactly like this.
All right. By virtue of hearing, sitting through several of these hearings previously, I can say that this information is repetitive. I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually ask that it not be presented in this format because it already previously has been presented in similar hearings.
I'm sorry, you want to hear this?
Prior wind farm hearings.
But that's not in this record. What the prior, I mean, there has not been anybody in here to testify in this record to this. That wasn't a prior record that they have not adopted in this hearing. This is a completely new hearing. No one on the county board or the EPA should rely on anything that occurred in prior hearings to grant or deny the special use.
Mr. Chairman, I'll pull again. This is from January 29, 2015, hearing transcript, pages 1807 to 1808. Ms. Burwood, well, I have another question. It relates to both these procedures, to both these procedures. Is there going to be an opportunity for any written comment? I've been asked that by members of the public. Will people be able to submit a written comment to the record? Chairman Purnell, for written comment regarding, Ms. Burwood, the application or comprehensive plan, for example? Chairman Purnell. The application will accept, will accept written comment if you want to provide it as exhibit testimony? Ms. Burwood, okay, Chairman Purnell. We've never disallowed that. Ms. Burwood, do they have to come here to do that? Do they have to come to a hearing to do that, or can they mail it to the office? Or, Chairman Purnell, the witness must appear. Ms. Burwood, okay, Chairman Purnell. And be sworn, subject to cross-examination, all those things that every other witness is subject to. Ms. Burwood, okay, I now, I know what to tell you. This had nothing to do with experts, this had to do with anyone who wishes to submit any kind of comment. Per the rules of this board, they have to come in here and be sworn and be subject to cross-examination.
And Mr. Harms, I think, put in testimony, put in documents from Illinois Agriculture Aviation Association without anybody from the IAA being. Now, one person here, he was not, he's not an expert, that's the exact same thing that they were allowed to do, and I objected too early on.
Uh, no, actually, he never objected to that.
But maybe it's that same thing.
But maybe he does object to it.
All right, there's an objection. I'm gonna lull the objections. If you can skip through this, just move through this and, uh, move, move past these particular stages.
Can I talk about the amount of money that people will be charged for living in the wind farms in the state of aerial application? That's not being presented here. And Mr. Harms testified that people would not see a surcharge, and that was incorrect. He talked to a fertilizer and pesticide dealer where you would not see a surcharge. This is for the application charge.
Okay, you can talk about the dollar values associated with it.
For the acres that pilots deem accessible or treatable, the local companies will charge a premium fee above and beyond the normal servicing fees. Shirts Aerial charges a flat 50% application surcharge on top of their normal fee, while Pontiac Surf Flying Service will increase your application fee somewhere between $2 to $5 an acre, depending upon the complexity of the area. The reason for these increased fees includes the need for extra fuel due to more complicated efforts for exits to and from a field, and the time it takes for the applicators to coordinate with the wind energy companies. These companies often have maintenance crews in the area or other staff and require applicators to coordinate and notify them prior to treating an area. This also leads to a delay in treatment of fields, and as we've already covered, timing can affect the rate. A delay of even a day or two in the application of a pesticide or fertilizer can lead to significant yield reductions. I think it's very, very important to note that these fee increases I spoke about don't apply just to landlords with a turbine or high voltage lines physically located on their property, but the project will impact all the acres in and even around the project boundaries. You do not have to have a turbine on your property to have your land deemed inaccessible or to receive a surcharge. Your neighbor's choice ultimately impacts your land and your farming operation. The NAA, National Agriculture Aviation Association, outlined a number of safety tower guidelines. This would be M. Dassel exhibit four, a fact sheet from the NAA. Their number one guideline is that towers should not be erected on prime agricultural land in a manner that may hinder the aerial applicator access and the ability to treat the land. Let's remember, these wind energy companies are not located in our area and can end up being located out of state and even out of country and sold, and in general are out of touch with Livingston County. Both Shirts Aerial and Pontiac Flying Service you might spoken to are members of the Illinois Agriculture Aviation Association, the IAA. In 2005, this association adopted the resolution shown here because of the lack of concern for wind energy proponents regarding the potential loss of aerial application as a tool in the farmer's toolbox. Please see my exhibit number five for detailed information from the IAA website regarding their wind turbine policies and their resolution. The resolution was reendorsed in 2009 and remains in effect today. In general, they are concerned with the dangers that wind farms pose to our attic pilots, and in the interest of their safety, the association will refuse to make aerial applications inside and over turbines or to farm ground immediately adjacent to a group of turbines should a pilot determine the area's hazardous. During the January 21 hearing, Mr. Blazer interviewed Pleasant Ridge exhibit 229, an email straight between Allison Sand, manager of business development with Inverge, and Mr. Rick Reed, executive director of the IAA. When Mr. Blazer submitted the correspondence, he said that Inverge had been consulting with Mr. Reed regarding any concerns his association may have regarding the project in general. Mr. Blazer also said, and I quote, "The only concerns Mr. Reed raised were with respect to the marking of the Met Tower." As we just saw on the previous slide, in general, the IAA is concerned with all aspects that wind energy development has on aerial applicators, and it seems in this instance they found a specific additional concern with Inverge's Met Tower. I was already aware of the IAA stance on wind farms and felt this matter needed further clarification. My husband and I contacted Mr. Rick Reed and provided him with the expert excerpt from the testimony on January 21 from the previous slide. I would now like to submit M. Dassel, exhibit number six, the letter from Mr. Rick Reed, the executive director of the IAA.
Objection. Same objection.
He entered their emails between Allison and Mr. Reed.
Same objection, Mr. Chairman, I guess, but the same rule.
It's a difference, it's a differentiation. It's completely different issue. Mr. Blazer submitted a document, this conflicts with that document, and we have the absolute right to put it in. Not if you're listening, if you don't have the person here to, you know what, you have had, Mr. Blazer has had so many people testify about things that were not presented here.
All right.
And I asked on the first night, hearsay objection for this exact reason, so that we deal with the ground rules.
This has nothing to do with hearsay, this has to do with the rules of this board.
And the previous slide, I would think was maybe down.
Mr. Blazer.
Yes, sir.
To your objection, we will allow exhibit six. You entered into an exhibit 229, a series of emails from Rick Reed, this is simply a letter to Ms. Dassel, someone in regards to that. So you entered in information he wasn't here to present, she's entering in information he wasn't here to present.
Thank you. You can read the letter entirely, however, I think there are some important statements for now. Mr. Reed said, "An email thread between Ms. Allison Sand and myself was presented as evidence that the Illinois Agriculture Aviation Association has no concerns or issues with the Pleasant Ridge Wind Energy Project other than inadequate marking of their Met Towers." That is a misrepresentation of the facts. That is a misrepresentation of the facts. He goes on to state that he was never asked to submit any evaluation of the project plans. Additionally, he detailed to her, Ms. Sand, that any wind energy, the any wind development results in a certain loss of farm ground treatable from the air, and that placing their turbines in a linear pattern could minimize the percentage lost. Ms. Sand replied with the quote, "Stop answer" for why that's not possible. For the record, there are other wind companies who design their wind developments in that pattern. There are wind developments currently in operation here in Illinois. A percentage of farm ground is deemed inaccessible from the air in all of them. Rezoning agricultural ground for industrial use by wind energy facility will cause our producers, even if they are non-participating individuals, to have to alter their farming operations and incur additional expenses. Next, I'd like to address the possible impacts that this proposed wind farm might have on air medical transport for our area. When I first heard about this project, I began looking into the impacts of precision aerial application right away, and that led me to the issue of air medical transport. I was concerned that if the agricultural pilots were finding that they would not service our area, why would it be any different for Life Flight and other medical transport companies? I first contacted OSF Lifeflight, who's a hospital and its offices here in Livingston County. I spoke with Karen Arndt, A-R-N-D-T, the outreach coordinator for OSF Lifeflight by phone October 29 of last year. She told me that their aircraft doesn't ever land in the.
Objection, Mr. Chairman.
I'll just put it in the newspaper.
Can I just tell you the objection? Is he, what's the objection?
She's now purporting to put in a statement with a written oral from this, Ms. Arndt. Ms. Arndt is not on any list of anyone who's gonna be testifying.
Which under the normal rules of evidence is hearsay, which we've already determined is not applying.
Again, it has nothing to do with hearsay. It has to do with the rules of this proceeding.
You find, you find the written rule that says that's improbable, but there is no such rule.
I don't think I have to read again, but it's a quote from the.
All right. Can you exclude this and just move on, pass some of it?
This is definitely to hear.
That's okay, I'll play the exhibit for no worries. During my conversation with Ms. Arndt, she.
Objection.
Somebody referred me to contact Mr. Scott Hagan with Air Messes. Air Messes is a very large air medical transport company with 300 base operations throughout the United States. They have 11 here in Illinois alone. They also maintain their own national communications call center. I'd like to enter into evidence, M. Dassow, Number 7, email correspondence between myself and Mr. Scott Hagan. And M. Dassow, Number 8, Mr. Hagan's bio and credentials from the Air Messes Lifestar website.
I'll object to Number 7. I actually, I have 2 7s, I'm sorry. I don't have any. Just 5. Just 5. Just as 5, that's a, it's just as 5, but it's a baseline. I do object to Number 7 of the email.
All right. We'll move 7, we'll allow 8. And you can go ahead and continue, please.
So any emails between myself and anybody are not allowed to be entered, but between Allison Sand and Invenergy, other Invenergy employees and other random people are watching in? I'm just confused, and I wouldn't.
But by having heard that type of correspondence, they'd waived this objection. They have done this exact same thing, and by doing that, they'd waive this objection.
Pleasant Ridge 229 is the exact same thing. Allison Sand has not gotten up here and testified about anything nor shown on the list to testify.
I agree with 229, wholeheartedly, because it specifically spoke of a Reed, and your correspondence was with Reed. So it seems fair. This is between someone that we, they're intent, don't have the opportunity to cross-examine or, or.
Mr. Reed was a big cross-exam and had contacts with him, my husband and I ourselves.
And, and that ends why we get allowed the Reed conversation. So, um.
And, and this conversation between Hagan and Mr. Hagan, this isn't between someone partying, Mr. Hagan. This is her and Mr. Hagan. It's just, the only objection to this is hearsay.
No, it's not my objection to hearsay.
Keep saying it.
Can I finish?
It's hearsay.
Stop this, it's not in my objection.
Can I finish once? The only way that any of this is objectionable is if it is hearsay. We've already determined hearsay is not objectionable. He can say, the only, the only, the only reason you can rule what you do is because of hearsay objection.
Nope. Okay, it is not admissible if the person who has not come in has sworn and is subject to the cross-examination. It has nothing to do with the hearsay objection.
That is hearsay. That's the definition of hearsay.
Okay, you guys. We, we need to, we need to just relax a little bit. I've ruled on 7 and 8. I'm gonna stand by our ruling on 7 and 8. We will take it on a case-by-case basis. I mean, Reed is allowable. This particular one, we're, we're not, we're not gonna allow.
I would ask for a leave.
I've ruled on this. We're moving on.
I would ask for a leave to go back and move the strike considering the rules have changed throughout the hearing. Many of the exhibits filed and filed by Invenergy. This is the exact same thing as Allison Sand's correspondence.
If I were you, would I allow this thing? Can I say it? Like, it is my understanding that, that Invenergy's policy doesn't allow aircraft to land inside wind farms. They don't.
This is stuff you guys need to hear.
I have no reason to lie or make a decision now, super hot, I can't, I can't ask my father.
All right. Unfortunately, you can't, based on your experiences, speak of aerobatics and their methodology to land or not land in a wind farm. So, Mr. Blazer's gonna continue to object, and I'm gonna have to continue to allow his objection. Okay? So, if, if you could, I mean, if you had firsthand experience not landing in a wind farm, then enlighten us and then keep going, and we'll allow that.
No, I'm not a pilot.
Okay, all right.
Okay. If our area order become inaccessible to life-saving medical transport, I believe this is a direct violation of Number 2 under the standards for special uses that states a project will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. I'd like to switch gears and focus a little bit on the natural and cultural resources in our area. Being a good steward of your land is not only protecting the soil, water, and wildlife of your property, but also keeping the history of the area alive and protecting that knowledge for future generations. In Livingston County, people always think of arrowheads or other stone tools when they're asked about evidence of past human history. However, there are many other things that qualify as cultural resources. That centennial farm that's been with your family for generations, a unique building in town or in the country, historic transportation routes, wagon trails, and of course burial sites, mobile sites, are all examples of cultural resources. The information contained in these resources is delicate and is irreplaceable. They are the windows to our past, hold the history of our environment, and even provide us with the answers to modern-day issues. There are unknown, there's an unknown number of undiscovered and unprotected cultural resources in rural America. We have miles and miles of land that has been largely protected from deep excavation, and therefore holds many secrets yet to be uncovered. The picture shown here depicts a soil profile as an archaeological dig site. The plough zone is at the top. This is the layer of the soil that's been mixed together over the years by farming to ensure existence. You can see where the soil changes color and heated to the undisturbed soils. This is the area that holds the footprints and artifacts of things like an old historic home, a home site, or a village, the remains of a fire pit, and even the storage hatch in an old home. You can see some of the artifacts sitting out in the soil for a while in this picture. This is actually where there was a wooden post from a structure, and they backfilled the hole with stones to stabilize that structure. These are the hidden structures that will be locked when Invenergy excavates their access roads, digs up an area over acre in size and many feet deep to construct their concrete turbine bases, and I can't imagine what's gonna be lost forever as they trench in hundreds and hundreds of miles of underground cable, five to six feet deep. Invenergy has submitted a few sentences regarding the cultural resources evaluation done by STANTEX using information obtained from the Obama's or archaeological department. This information can be found in their application packet on page 20, section 5.5. STANTEX states there is limited known cultural resources in the area. The key word in that sentence is "known." They also state that a two-mile radius around the project area was evaluated for the purpose of this report. When I read Appendix H in the application, which is the actual summary report from the U of I, I did find one mistake in STANTEX's summary and found their narrow and limited interpretation of U of I's findings very interesting. U of I evaluated a one-mile area around the project for known cultural sites, not a two-mile upper, as STANTEX stated. I believe that STANTEX also left out some important information provided to them. The U of I reports that there has been very limited cultural resource investigation in the project area, and most of the project area has not actually ever been surveyed for cultural resources. So yes, of course, there would be limited known cultural sites simply because nobody has ever done any investigations. It's kind of hard to find something if you don't look for it, don't you think? Additionally, STANTEX forgot to mention in their summary that the U of I Department of Public Service Archaeology and Architecture Program has informed them that due to the location, overall project size, proximity to water, and topography of the Pleasant Ridge areas, that it's likely cultural resources will be present, and Invenergy should anticipate and count them. Round shooting of the project area and archaeological surveys need to be completed in reports, findings, or summaries to be provided to our county prior to permitting. Proof of correspondence with the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, should also be provided. I feel that the historic viewscape should also be taken into consideration as they lay out this project. No negative impact to any centennial farm should be permitted. Turbines, transmission lines, substations, and other underground structures should not be allowed to impact or alter the aesthetics of any homestead that contains stored structures, especially if those structures are unparticipating property. How will Invenergy mitigate these encounters that they undoubtedly have? What will be their process for cataloguing, reporting, and protecting these sites? Who will be overseeing this part of the project? I know there's protocol, however, it's not outlined in the STANTEX report and no other documents provided by the applicant. The Livingston County Soil and Water Preservation District has spent several months round shooting in the proposed turbine sites and access roads when compiling the Natural Resources and Information Report, or the NRI. The purpose of the NRI was to inventory our natural resources and document potential impact due to this project. Before I go any further, I want to ask the chairman if I'm permitted to discuss this report, being that it was only submitted into evidence by the applicant, and they have not provided anyone to testify on the matter even if it's justified or crossed the line.
All right. As a reminder, the NRI was submitted by the county and applied for submission.
All right, because it is in evidence, you can comment on the, on that previously submitted document.
Thank you. I have been patiently waiting for this report to be completed and entered into evidence that by his seed would have been discovered. This was partly due to my personal interest in conservation of natural resources, and also in part because when I found out how turbines and their access roads were placed, I was pretty concerned. It turned out, according to what I was told, someone sits in an office and cites these structures from their desk based off of data obtained by the Met Towers. I can tell you from personal experience, that trying to do planning from your desk without putting your boots on the ground is an impossible task. The SWCD put together a detailed report at the by dot county with an important planning tool, and also provides landowners with suggestions for improving their land and helping to protect our soil, water, and wildlife resources. However, I didn't get past page 4 of the report before I realized much of the effort by our SWCD had been forgotten. It's very important to note that the report was based on information regarding turbine and access to all locations provided by Invenergy in the supplement to the original application that was filed in October. On page 4 of the report, the SWCD states that, quote, "Due to time constraints, the report did not take into account any operation and maintenance building sites, substation sites, staging area, overhigh transmission lines, and that the areas impacted by underground collection lines were only evaluated if they were near turbine or access road location." Invenergy has been working on this project for over a decade. Why was the Soil and Water District not given ample time to complete a review of all the locations? Furthermore, the report goes on to state that at several times during the preparation of the report, representatives from our SWCD met with Invenergy to discuss preliminary findings. And as a result of those meetings, as well as ongoing meetings with landowners to discuss these sort of concerns, Invenergy has revised some of the locations of turbines and access roads. The SWCD goes on to say that, again, they were not given sufficient time to reassess all revised locations, and that the revision process is continuous and ongoing. I believe that the SWCD tried to do their due diligence on behalf of our county, and I thank them for their hard work. However, I would like to some questions. Why didn't Invenergy give consultation with our SWCD prior to filing their application? And why weren't they given ample time to survey all, all aspects of this project? Why would the SWCD not given time to evaluate the revised locations and make additions and corrections to their report? Why is the revision process still continuous and ongoing at the time of this report, which was March 3, 2015? If Invenergy is still at this point moving turbines and access roads, and has been making changes to their project while these hearings have been going on, at what point is this application considered complete so that it can be voted on? How do changes affect previously submitted reports like STAN studies, and when can they see these changes that they made? In my personal opinion, their application is not complete, and they were not ready to present a final product to the county when these hearings started. At this time, I would like to make a personal statement. I want to extend my sincere thanks to the members of the ZPA for doing their best to make this process as transparent as possible. That was your promise to us at the beginning, and you kept that promise. You've asked thought-provoking questions, have done your homework, and come prepared for each other meeting. You've shown respect to each person who has testified, and have taken every step of this lengthy process very seriously. I want you to know that we, the residents of Livingston County, appreciate the fine job you've done over the last several months, and that if any of you should decide you'd like to run for the county board, you can be sure you have my vote. Believe it or not, I would even like to thank Invenergy. People say these types of projects tear our communities apart, but I think the exact opposite is happening here in southeast Livingston County. Small-town America seems to have amazing ability to rally together during times of tragedy. Small town America seems to have amazing ability to rally together during times of tragedy. But we do rally before the storm. Because of that, we will be stronger from this point forward. The threat it brings to our homes, health, farms, and enjoyment of life has united us. So thank you. I did interrupt the Livingston County, or even Illinois for that matter. I tell people I'm married into this county when I married into an amazing, well-respected farm family. My husband is a sixth generation of farmer's family's land. This is an aerial shot of the home my husband and I live in. We also farmed the land in the picture as well. The home is situated just eighty-five feet from the property on the east, a hundred and thirty feet on the north, and a hundred and eighty-nine to the west. Mr. Blazer, I'm going to beat you to the punch on this one. Here's a closer look at the farmstead. The house, which was built eighteen-seventy, and a two-part garage on the east side of the property. The ceilings in the garage are too low to even park a truck or SUV in, so we don't store anything in there, machinery improvised. There's two old small grain buildings and many people used to call them government bins. They're out of commission and we don't store any of our grain in there. They serve as a great place for raccoons to hide. On the west side of the property is a shed, and I use that term lightly. It's only closed on three sides, has a dirt floor, and is basically open to the elements, so we don't store any machinery in there or anything that is of any value. It serves no purpose other than to keep some of the snow off our vehicles in the winter. Just to the south of that is the original wooden machine shed. It's open on each end, so at one time you can pull equipment through. It's old, serves no purpose, and basically I'm waiting for it to fall down. The most important feature about this property, which I'm sure Mr. Blazer was hoping to ask me about, is that we rent this home and the grounds around it. We don't own any of it. However, since we found out about this proposed wind farm, I thank our lucky stars every day that we don't own this property and that we didn't approach our landlords about purchasing it. There are five turbines between half and three-quarters of a mile of this home proposed and maybe in all directions except for the southeast. This is the floor plan of a home we had kicked out. These are pictures of a dream bathroom that I love, a kitchen and laundry room layout that we like. We know what kind of floor and inhabitants we want in our home and really the only thing left for us to do is decide what colors we paint at the exterior. After looking at everything that has come on the market since we moved back here, my husband and I decided that we wanted to build a home of our own. We had sent this floor plan to Central Builders between December twenty thirteen and early spring of last year. We don't currently have children, but chose this floor plan because we are planning our future. My husband has a large family that we would love to be able to host during the holidays and being that my family's from out of state, we want a home that can accommodate them when they come to visit. They shouldn't have to stay because you've already built it. Most importantly, we want to be sure we have enough space so that if the need arises, we can provide our parents with a comfortable home where they feel welcome. Attached to this home, we had also planned for a large shop area that would need to accommodate our expanding farming operations. As I showed you previously, we don't have any proper outlookings at our current residence. But since we bought land, pardon my pun, about the proposed wind farm, we haven't talked about building anything. What's even more frightening is that a few years ago, we toyed with the idea of purchasing the land where we want to build our home and waited a few years before we actually began construction. Had we done that, because the land doesn't currently have an existing primary structure on it, anyone could have constructed turbines just five hundred feet from the property line, making the property unfit for a home. Then what would we have done? Invenergy has said numerous times throughout these hearings that property value defined associated with wind farms isn't real and that it's all about perception. While in our case, and I'm sure others share the same sentiment, perception is reality. If this project is approved, I can assure you, you will never build a home in Livingston County. I'm not a gambler. I've never been to Vegas. I don't even buy lottery tickets. So I sure as heck won't gamble with our life savings and invest in a home here. I'll be content to reside in our rented Civil War-era home. At one of the thirty-first county board meetings I attended this past summer, while local residents were expressing their concerns about the wind farm, a man standing in front of me said, "If you don't like it, just move." Well, it isn't that simple. If this project was approved and built, as much as I'd want to move, it just wouldn't be possible. We, like most of our friends and family, are tied to this land emotionally and financially. The land is how the men have lived and you can't just move the farm. My husband and I obtained that here to live permit several years ago and we never heard a single word about this potential wind farm until a few weeks before Invenergy filed their application. And even then, we found out by word of mouth. We never received any correspondence in the mail, never got an invitation to an informational meeting, not so much as a knock on the door from an Invenergy employee until after the application was filed. So I had to laugh out loud when Invenergy began taking out full-page PR ads in local newspapers this fall, stating that they had been working openly in our community since 2005. Where were these ads over the past ten years? Why haven't you had a storefront on Main Street since 2005 so I could stop in and ask questions? Why has it taken you a decade to file an application? If the public has the wrong idea about wind energy, why haven't you been holding well-publicized, influential meetings to help us learn more? Something that is supposedly so lucrative and such a blessing for our area should have been the talk of the town. Instead, it was a dark secret and only few were pretty to. I sat down numerous times to write this statement and each time I would delete my hard work and start over. I felt like I was supposed to say something profound and moving, yet nothing seemed good enough. But I realized it had nothing to do with me and had nothing to do with the simple fact that the evidence presented over the last several months speaks for itself. The community's support for this project is lacking and the potential rest of people, farms, property, and natural resources in and around the project is too high. There's no need for me to rehash it because it's all been laid out for everyone to see. Aldo Leopold, a famous conservationist and writer, said, "Cease being intimidated by the argument that a right action is impossible because it does not yield maximum profits or that a wrong action is to be condoned because it pays." I ask that when the time comes, the ZPA and county board members remember Aldo Leopold's wise words and use the facts before them to make the right, decent, and ethical decision for the people in Southeastern Livingston County and both know Invenergy's application for a special use permit. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? ZPA have any questions? Local government, school districts? Mr. Blazer?
She answered all mine, Mr. Blazer.
Sorry.
Anybody in the audience with questions for me? Anybody out there with questions? ZPA and county council, county council. Thank you. Alright, next on my list, they have Ruth Wessels.
Mr. Chairman, I'm watching Jim with the rest of me. That was a partner of you. This may be a good time for her to take a break.
Okay, alright. Ruth, we're gonna take, why don't we take a break before we take you, so you're, so you guys can... Find your way to your seats and take a bow. Mrs. Wessels, can I please have you sworn in? Put your right hand. You solemnly swear your testimony. You shall give this case now here and shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self, you guys. Alright, put your name and address for a court reporter and then you can go ahead and begin.
Before, um, when you heard anything about injuring the children's health with the turbines, we were offered about three turbines. This would have been in sections eight and nine, play a challenge, and this was in eight.
Can you hear, okay. You have to get closer to the microphone.
Here. Sorry. Can you hear me now? In nineteen eighty, we were offered three turbines by, it was a different company, I'm guessing more than a resident, I didn't keep that record, so I can't tell you what the name of the company was, but we turned down three turbines. And, um, and that's what I, uh... So many of the articles said that only the people that were making the money on it were for, and I, I, I am definitely against it. I am definitely against it. When my husband passed away, we beaded our farm land to kids who were, not kids, it was a child, it was a child. And, um... So I told the man that came to the house, wanted me to sign for those turbines, that he had to clear that with them because I was too bored and it was up to them anyway, it didn't matter what I thought. And, um, all three of them said no. And, um, one of them said, um, just a few weeks before, we had sold the farmstead to a young couple and he said that would not be fair to them. That would be absolutely not fair to them if we would let the turbines go up and we all agreed to that. And, uh, and another son had gone many, he was an outdoor person and he had gone to many of the turbines around and to see if there were birds under there and he always found a lot of dead birds. So I've heard some people say that's not true, but you know, any time anyone in my family has gone to a turbine, there's been a lot of dead birds and not sparrows either, but the mice birds. And, uh, and then my daughter, who they farm our land, or their land now, and they're very concerned about what would be left. The kind of mess it would be left when it's over. I know they're saying that it's going to be cleaned up completely and, and, um... But that's corporation, I assume. Does anybody know that it isn't corporation? And all corporation has to do is to go bankrupt and they're gone, so you know, I, I don't place any confidence in that. And also, they were concerned about the, trying to farm around those turbines and roads that go through them and so on like that. They were very much concerned about that. So it was all three of them, no, and made their mother very proud, honestly. I'm, I'm not, certainly not wealthy. I still get twenty percent of the income from that land that I was talking about. And, um, but we made the decision to forevote the turbines before we heard anything about making the children sick. I don't know how anybody would do that, put a turbine when they know it's making children sick. And some of the dogs, I, I've talked to two people that just can't sleep because of that turbine. And I really feel sorry for them because if you can't rest at night, I don't know what you do in the daytime. In my view, this special use application does not meet the standards of special uses. Based on the evidence presented, it will be determined to public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of our community. I hope that my testimony and the testimony of others is being heard. Please both know in this special use permit.
ZPA question for Mrs. Wessels. Mr. Blazer, Mr. McGanns, uh, school districts, local government, audience. County council, county council. Oh, Carolyn. Alright, Mrs. Wessels, if you can come back up to the podium here.
Chairman Gerwin, just a quick question. You said that you talked to two people who couldn't sleep due to turbines? Do you know, um, what area they were from?
The one was from Edinburg and I'm not sure about that one.
And you talked to them personally?
Alright. Next on my list, Mary Russell. Mary Russell, are you available to speak? Mary Russell, let us know you're here or not here. Alright, we have a, you don't think she's here, okay? Kent Zimmerman. Kent Zimmerman.
Not here.
Not here. Peter Elber. Peter Elber.
Not here.
Not here. It's remaining easy on me. I'm getting your names quick, no. John Freed. John Freed, are you here this evening?
I'm in the field.
Alright. Joe Whitman. Joe Whitman? Alright, and then on that is Sharon Schrock. Sharon Schrock. Mr. Whitman, can you please put your right hand? You solemnly swear your testimony. You shall give this case now here and shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self, you guys. Alright, put your name and address for a court reporter and go ahead and begin.
My name is Joe Whitman, three five six seven one East One Thousand North Road in Chatsworth. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board and make my personal statement. As for my background, I do not come from a big generation farming family. I am only second generation in this country, born and raised on the north side of Chicago, just three miles from the runways of O'Hare. I spent the first seventeen years of my life planning my escape from the city. In the next four, I earned a bachelor's degree from the College of Agriculture at U of I and ten years after that was employed by the University of Illinois School of Veterinary Medicine. There, I met and married one of your native sons and twenty-eight years later, we bought a fourteen-acre abandoned homestead in World Chatsworth. Since then, we gratefully and peacefully raised two children and countless animals, built a new home, completely refurbished two more, and one hundred-year-old barns, paid our taxes, and built relationships with good, caring, honest neighbors. We built our home with no plans of retirement, declaring to the former owners that we would only make in pine boxes. Now plans for addition have been put on hold as I helplessly watch my home sanctuary threatened by an impending industrial wind project. I will not live in an industrial wind project. Most of my objections to this project and to lack of compliance with the special needs permits of Livingston County have been already quite eloquently expressed by my fellow United Citizens, so I have nothing left to offer but some comments from the heart, which I will keep short. I have extended all but two hearings. In that amount of time, I have wanted desperately to hear from anybody as to why this project would be a good thing for this community. Anything that would make the sacrifice of our home health, well-being, farming tranquility, and roadway life work. We have heard warnings from other wind project residents. Don't do this. I'm still waiting to hear from the land of modern farming project residents. The only benefits that I believe came from the opposing testimony is that for a while, the school district will receive two percent of its budget. Two landowners in particular will make a lot of money and a few other landowners will make a little money. Invenergy itself is just a huge parade of red flags categorically denying any problems in any of their projects with the wind and with the wind industry in general. I would have more respect for them if they admitted to problems and addressed them, but their only defense in the face of opposition is to discredit the messenger. Now that they have sneaked in and bribed our people into signing their land rights to white flour, they have made it abundantly clear that the rest of us will go to hell. While two gods of us have made it clear with our petitions, our presence, our signs, our money, and our time that we do not want to get into bed with Invenergy. I have to commend the rest of a few individuals as well. To Dr. Capas, after years of enjoying your essays and talk, Harold, I thought at one point we should have worn a philosophical paladin. But when you were at first school board meeting declaring with a laugh, "All things aside, I want the money", I joined in the audible gas that came from my insomniac. It is a sorry state with two percent of your budget. Your share of the wind welfare comes before the health, welfare, and quality of life of your students and their families. I also find it ironic due to Mr. Gelfer's decision that in a school district where mothers are not allowed to bring homemade cupcakes into a classroom, that every single child in the very central system will potentially be... will potentially be exposed to the known and yet unknown dangers of these turbines for eight hours a day. To Mr. Elber, you did not do your homework as exemplified by your lack of attendance at almost one hundred fifty hours of informational meetings. I find your decision to risk the health and well-being of every forest resident and every Prairie Central student based on your own common sense of policy. Equally, your policy is your pride in doing no research on wind energy other than what was fed to you by your energy and the lack of including the very people you were elected to represent in these life-altering decisions. To the members of the tri-point school board, you also did not do your homework as exemplified for the most part by your lack of participation in these hearings. But even if you did, you made it clear that your share of the pie, thirty-five thousand dollars a year, is more important to you than the welfare of students you were elected to represent and also more important than the welfare of the residents, literally, than the other footprint of the energy project. I was amazed when you admitted that your tri-point constituents were unaware that you were even testifying in this hearing and sorry that we wouldn't even stay for the remaining half of the meeting. I was not surprised when your superintendent admitted he got all of his information from Mr. Blazer, but in his defense, he did grow up with an old-fashioned wind knowledge, I felt. To Joe, good reunion guys, no one appreciates a hardworking man more than I do. I'm a former reunion member myself, and if I moved here, I'd go a hundred and twenty miles round trip to my reunion job for years. This community did not want me a job. And I hope you understand that seven or eight paychecks for you is not a fair exchange for imprisoning the non-participating members of this community in industrial wasteland for the rest of their lives. To his own important appeals, thank you for listening to and evaluating both sides of this life-altering issue. To the county board members, I can only beg you in the light of all the new information coming forth about the dangers of life and wind project, that you will put your personal agendas aside and do the right thing by helping note to this application that I believe so many of your constituents have demonstrated is not meet the standards of special use permit for Livingston County. To Wind Energy, you are not welcome in our community. And to my fellow United Citizens of Livingston County, I did not know most of you on the first meeting at the courthouse that summer. I have humbled by your tenacity, your brilliance, your hard work, your fearlessness, your patience, and most of our responsibility in the face of named wind. The dignity and strength of character you have displayed in your dedication to our home throughout your life is nothing of no amount of money to everybody. I thank you for what you have done to defend my home and family and proud to be counted among you. Thank you.
Any questions? Uh, junior school, whoever in the school districts. Mr. Blazer, Mr. Luke Hans, your representative. Uh, other individuals in the audience with questions of Mr. Whitman. Anybody out there? No? ZBAA in? County State, County Council. Thank you. All right, next on my list, Sharon Schrock. And then on deck is John Rich. John Rich, is he here? If not, Carol Knapp. If not her, George Bush. Sharon up here, yep. Can you please be sworn in, Sharon? Raise your right hand, if you solemnly swear a testament, you should give this case down here. You shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self you got. All right. Uh, please state your name and address for the court recorder and then you can go ahead and begin.
I'm Sharon Schrock.
You're gonna have to speak a little bit louder, so we're waiting to hear you and, and, uh...
Okay, I'm Sharon Schrock, six twenty-one Forest, Green Forest, Illinois. Um, I grew up in the bear in Forest, and he, which he waited in Pleasant Ridge for seventy-eight years for myself and eighty years for the other. Okay. Our home in Forest is three quarters of a mile from two wind turbines and we're living down. Due to the setback of a half a mile that Forest now has, Forest itself is closely surrounded by thirty-plus wind turbines for us south, east, and west. Then we have farmland, seventy acres north, also in Pleasant Ridge. Um, um, it's one mile or less from ten wind turbines. Uh, the, the land is in Section fifteen, which is the northwest corner along Route forty-seven and the wind road, which might in the future be a decent place for residential or small business if our children and grandchildren chose to do so in the future. Hope the wind mills, if that's where they come, would not happen. Also, another bullet, off the Route forty-seven at the north end of Forest, which I'm at a half a mile from, has multiple businesses along it. The fire department and the cell cast responder, it's there. The SS gas station, the junior high school of Prairie Central, which is very populated, many students. State highway garage, a parking canopy, a large church, and the bathtop that is going to also be located there next to the FS building. Um, the wind farms in American has much population. God has given us a beautiful prime farmland, and we are expected to be good stewards of it. We should be held accountable for abusing it with an industrial wind farm rather than keeping our beloved serene rural lands. Thank you to the ZBAA for their time and patience during this very difficult procedure. And I respectfully request the ZBAA and the Livingston County Board to both note on this project, we do not want this.
Sharon, any questions from ZBAA? School districts, local government, anybody out there? Mr. Blazer, he's not, no. Mr. Luke Hans, she's, okay. Uh, members of the audience, any questions from Sharon? Anybody else have any questions? ZBAA again, County State, County Council. Sharon, thank you. All right, next on the list, John Rich. John Rich, are you available? All right. Carol Knapp? Carol Knapp, are you available? George Bush? George Bush, are you available? Terri Cope? Terri Cope? John Schlaue? I have two more names on the list. Warren Gillette and Adam Followwell. Warren Gillette. Is he here this evening? Not here? Adam Followwell, I believe somebody, somebody told me that he wouldn't be with us by as well. Oh, yeah, I do have. And just for the record, Carolyn, you have not testified. You previously had signed up, but I instructed to cross your name off the list. Is that correct? Yes, it is. All right. Just so we can kind of go through this. The names that I have read tonight and knew were not sure available this evening. Looks like at our next meeting, which I'll issue you guys the dates, um, we'll call those names. Sounds like we're pretty well through this list. We'll get to Mr. Schlaue's presentation tonight, see how we're doing, make sure nobody else is here. Uh, I'll call those names again, um, at our next meeting. If they're not here, they can miss their opportunity. So we're really winding down on this, um, moving forward past him. We're looking at, uh, kind of the next phase of the hearing. Um, there will be some rebuttal, surr- rebuttal. Try to schedule those nights. Two nights together, we'll do our best to try to get those that way we can get to that process as well. So, um, with that, Mr. Schlaue, you all ready?
Getting there, yep.
All right. All right, so I will tell you guys the date. It's gonna be on the twenty-first. Um, what's that? Tuesday, the twenty-first, it's gonna be at six-thirty and it's gonna be at the courthouse in Pontiac. All right? We're moving to the courthouse in Pontiac, so that particular being... The, the old, the historic courthouse in Pontiac, yeah, sorry. On the twenty-first, six-thirty. All right? And then the, the dates after that, well, we kind of have some tented, but I don't want to quote them off there. So for sure, twenty-first, six-thirty, historic courthouse. Mr. Schlaue, you ready?
Yes, I am.
All right. I please have you be sworn in.
Yep.
Who's raising their hand? Do you solemnly swear a testament, you should give this case down here. You shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self you got.
I do.
All right. Please state your name and address for the court recorder and go ahead and begin.
I'm John Schlaue. My address is Creole Way, East Berlevee. That's M-I-R-L-Y-N-B-E-T-A, February, Illinois. I'm gonna start with my professional qual- with my professional qualifications. Um, I graduated from UofA in nineteen ninety-three. Is that too long? Okay. I graduated from the University of Illinois in nineteen ninety-three with my bachelor's of computer science engineering. I am a member of the Acoustical Society of America. Overview, I've made my living growing computers for twenty-two years. During college, I worked part-time in a civil engineering company, doing me a good basis for things like math and data. After graduation, I worked in the computer game development industry through the nineties, and left the industry in two thousand and six. I switched gears to the automotive industry and am now partner of Automotive Powersports, two new companies based in February. Most programming projects that I've, that I've involved with take many years of program time to finish. While developing computer games, my primary role is the 3D games programmer using C and C++ and assembly language on various platforms like Windows, PCs, PS2, Xbox, and Xbox 3D sixty. 3D games and programmers are one of the most difficult tasks in game programming. It requires a solid understanding of math, linear algebra, calculus, physics, and computer hardware. 3D games use both graphics and sound to immerse the player. The sound part is actually very complex. We had to mix attention, hundreds of sounds together in real time, including emulating the 3D position on 2D stereo speakers with distance attenuation, geometry obstruction from the bores and hallways, room mixing effects like reverb, and outdoor effects for moving sound sources. Imagine a scene with bullets and missiles whizzing by, glass breaking, enemies screaming, explosions going off, and bullcasing as rattlings before, all while also playing background music and non-directional voices and effects. We started, sorry. We started this small company in nineteen ninety-three, and when I left in two thousand and six, we had over two hundred employees working on multi-million dollar projects. I worked on about eight games, all of which were successful, top-rated games, sold in major retailers around the world. In my current business, we produce devices that refresh automotive and powersports VCM with performance tunes. I do the programming for firmware on the devices, which involves reading and implementing a lot of ISO to SAE specifications for various protocols and implementing them into. Uh, I have here my, um, the Acoustical Society of America membership number one twenty-one thirty-six oh three. So my, let's see. I don't know what's on this here. Um, my, my time with the Wind Energy Project here began Saturday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen. I saw a post on Facebook where somebody said there was a town hall meeting in Pontiac where residents from the current wind project would be discussing living conditions in the project. I had nothing to do with everyone, so I followed up and checked out. After I went to the meeting, when I came home, uh, the first thing I did was type my first letter ever to the county board. And I'm gonna read you that letter that I wrote on June twenty-eighth, um, right after I got back from the meeting. So the subject was "I Messed Up", and I sent this to the Livingston County Board. Hi, first, thanks for your time on the other business. I'm a landowner who signed a contract with Wind Energy for Pleasant Ridge Farm a while back, about five years. I held out for a while, but then they told me they never heard of me signing up and kept bothering me. So I got greedy and thought I may as well get paid us. But I attended the town hall meeting today where someone from the familiar wind project told us of his family's mortal experience with their wind farm and how they then walked away from their house since they couldn't sleep at night. And how his county board and the wind farm company now refused to help him or talk to him. And we heard that they automatically dropped the property values, bringing houses inside the wind farm by at least twenty percent, sometimes up to eighty percent if you were close enough. That's a real loss for the county. Now I'm ashamed of my choice to sign up. Even if I'm a county with millions of here, that doesn't make the right if one family suffers this. The people who are making the money then refused to help them. But I hope the board members are smarter and less selfish than I was and correct my selfish decision, decision by researching the negative impacts this could have and make the right choice to protect the people and property who are in the affected area, since I didn't do that and made a poorly informed choice. We have very productive farmers and farming in the area, some of the best soil in the world. Are we so selfish that we want to risk our land, our identity, for short-term cash and tax-avoiding credits? If you choose to vote pro of the wind farm, at least, please answer the question. What will you do if this wind farm affects someone here like it did to that family? Will you ignore that also? Can you put a plan in place to help them buy a new house elsewhere? If nothing else, please drop the listen to these stories. I'm glad I did, it opened my eyes and changed my opinion. Thanks for listening. This is a report I presented before the ZBAA, um, on the Speed Week's amendment text amendment. And, uh, you said I should present to the ZBAA here if I wanted to be entered into the record. So I'm doing it in the simple tip of another ZBAA hearing at a college, I guess. So this is a report I did on homelessness of turbines. I made a map of a lot of wind farms in the last half a year. I'll just go ahead and start. This focuses on three wind farms near Livingston County. The operational Streeter, Streeter-Carney River Ridge South Wind Power Project in Livingston County. The operational California Ridge Project in Champaign, Illinois County. And the proposed... and the proposed Pleasant Ridge Wind Energy Project. The Streeter Caiuta project basically has 150 turbines, 397 foot to the tip. I have some other statistics there, if you want a source of reference. I don't think I need to go over this. The California Ridge Wind Energy Center, which was in, started construction in 2011. Um, it began operation in 2012, consisted of 110 turbines in Vermillion County, 22 turbines in Champaign County, for a total of 132 tonne turbines, very similar to our size project. The turbine height is 492 foot to the tip, 100 meter diameter over, which is maybe the same size or maybe smaller than our close project. The Pleasant Ridge Wind Energy Project, which is the one we're talking about tonight, is, uh, 134, 136 is what I have back here. Um, 2D turbines, uh, 427 foot height to the tip, and either 100 or 130 meter diameter of power. Sorry, I'm behind here. Where did they come from? Basically, for Pleasant Ridge, I imported the turbine locations from the special use permit, imported them into a Google Maps engine. For the other two projects, I manually located all 150 turbines for one project and the 132 for the other, using Google Maps engine. For the homes in both areas, I have manually located them. I tried to separate out home versus one building, like a house I marked differently from a farmhouse, um, based on what I do about the area. Um, I did with all local areas and big school buildings, in these figures. So, here's the raw data. Um, what this is, is the number of homes in various distances from the three projects. I used units of 1500 foot, 1600 foot, and then on up, I did a half a mile, 3000 foot, 3500 foot, one mile, and one and a half miles. And I counted all the houses for those distances. Um, I didn't go over one and a half mile, one and a half miles. Um, here's the Streeter Caiuta Ridge South project, all the homes, all the turbines. All these maps, we use the same coloring and the same, uh, labels. The black circles are homes, the white dots are the turbines. Anything red is within 1500 foot, anything yellow is within, well, what it is, is it's the closest distance from each point on the map to the turbine. So, if you're in the red area, that means there's a turbine within 1500 foot. If you're in the yellow area, there's a turbine within a half a mile of you. Green area is within one mile, cyan, within one and a half miles, and blue is over one and a half miles. You can see in the Streeter Caiuta Ridge project, they actually have a lot of, uh, the wind in its range in rows. So, this is the California Ridge, um, map, the same, it's the black dots are houses, white dots are turbines, and you can see the layout there. This is the Pleasant, Pleasant Ridge project, where we are. Um, I went ahead and I had to enter, uh, all the houses that, in the town forest, um, because they were within one and a half mile turbines. So, that's the big black cluster. Right there. Uh, that's the town forest. This graph is the number of homes affected by turbines per project. Um, the vertical axis is the number of homes that are within a certain distance of the turbine. The horizontal axis would be the various distances out from the turbine. So, if your house is here, that means you have a turbine from 1500 foot on up to the mile and a half, which is 7000 some foot. This, in this chart here, you can see that, once you get over 2500 foot, our project, which is the red line, quickly overcomes either project by quite a bit. Here's the same data, basically, in the bar graph form, so you can see for each, um, various distance, how many homes are at that distance or closer. Um, you can see that our red bar here for Pleasant Ridge, they have approximately, well, we'll get to that in a minute. So, my summary is, the Streeter Caiuta Ridge project has 150 turbines, and there are 215 homes within one and a half miles of the turbine. That is roughly 1.4 homes for each turbine with a rotor diameter of 276 foot. The California Ridge project has 132 turbines, and there are 352 homes within a mile and a half of the turbine. That is roughly 2.6 homes for each turbine with a rotor diameter of 328 foot. In Pleasant Ridge, there will be 136 turbines, but 836 homes will be within a mile and a half of the turbine. That is roughly 6.14 homes for each turbine with a rotor diameter of 328 to 338 foot. So, this, um, this little exhibit here is basically questions that came up in my head while people were testifying or while I was questioning them, or over the course of the trial, uh, our 27 nights tonight together. Stuff that came up, just randomly popped in my head that I didn't want to talk about. So, I'll try and get through this quick, but this is the stuff that, every time I've testified or I was asking somebody questions, this is the stuff I'm gonna talk about, so I'm gonna quickly go through this. Okay, so topic one and eight, are they fine? What I have here is the, uh, transcript of when I questioned Mr. Hanger. I asked Mr. Hanger, will these turbines be quiet and not cause anyone issues? Or are you simply saying they meet IPCV limits? Mr. Hanger replied, I'm saying they meet IPCV limits. I said, let's say the turbines were testing at the right of the limit, what's the A weighted decimal? He says, it's about 45, 46 DDA. And I said, so, the guy who works on wind wheels says these are quiet, there's no noise in the house, and you're saying they reach 45? He says, yes. I say, who's not telling the truth here? He says, 45 whispers is what you could receive at a house, so, I don't know what the guy who works on the turbine, you know, was talking about. Topic one will be no sequel effects. This is also questioning Mr. Hanger. So, this is when he was talking about the, um, California Ridge compliance study, and I asked him, during the study, did the residents ever report complaints when the turbines were shut down? Um, he said, well, I said, basically, when the turbine, when, sorry. Basically, when the residents complained the turbines were running at or near max capacity every time. He replied, almost every time, that's correct. I asked him, so we can conclude that meeting the IPCV limits will not protect you, will not protect you from noise complaints from residents, that's correct. And he replied, it did not in that case. So, topic one summary. Applicant's witness is not saying his turbines will be quiet. In fact, he says a homeowner very near the IPCV limits will be receiving 45 to 46 DDA. He also goes on to say that just because you meet IPCV limits does not mean you will not have complaints, not in the California Ridge case anyway. He also says that during California Ridge testing, the residents affected by the turbines knew when they were running, there was no sequel effect found. Topic two, what happens if this happens here? I was asking Mr. Hanger about why they did the noise study analysis. I said, okay, I guess people were saying the turbines were too loud, and so you guys came in to do a sound study, correct? Yes. And your sound study said? He answered, that meets the Illinois limits. I said, so then, what was your conclusion about what to do about the residents complaining that it was too loud? He answers, I guess that was the end of my responsibility. That was what I was hired to do, determine if we met the law. So, topic two summary. If this happens here, if residents are bothered by the noise and complain about it, based on California Ridge history, applicant may do IPCV compliance testing and have found a meeting compliance, nothing will be done. Don't forget, IPCV compliance does not equal Illinois complaints. Topic three, is a mile out safe? This is from February 9th, Marvin Stigman, um, testimony from Erie County. He, he said, very disgusting. Then, at 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning, we wake up with this roar. You couldn't, you couldn't get away from it. You go into the bathroom and build a house, shut the doors, and then it would penetrate. It's such a low frequency that nothing stops it. Then I asked him, um, how far the turbines were from his house, and his reply was, according to Google, Earth is 1.18 miles from the nearest one, and there are several that are just a little further than that. Topic three summary. The witness has trouble sleeping if turbines are over one mile away. Topic four, A, property values witness one. This is January 14th, with Mark Fay. So, I asked Mark Fay, what concerns me is if you came here and you say wind turbines do not affect your property values in a statistical way, whatever, right? He answered, yes, sir. So, I described it in my particular specific house in the country that's going to have three turbines near within 90 degree view, and says, so you're saying that my particular house is not going to lose value? Or in general, why might it be that someone else's will gain? How does it apply to my exact situation? His answer is, that's a tough one. I said, well, you're saying it won't change the value, so I shouldn't worry about the wind farm. He says, our expectation from all the literature is that nearby property values are not affected by wind turbines in proximity to them or view of it. That's the results in scientific literature. Now, a specific home, it's impossible to count on a specific home. You just don't know. There's so many variables, I just, you just don't know. Topic four B, property value witness number two, February 17th, Michael McCann. So, I once again explained it in my specific circumstances of my small house in the country with the three turbines by it, and I asked him, do you think this will impact the property values of that house? His answer is, it's certainly false within the shorter distances, the value impacts are measurable and measured in other locations. So, all the conditions are right for it if they built turbines that close to your home. Yes, sir. Topic four summary. Two witnesses were asked essentially the same question about a real-life property example. One witness who presented studies to show no statistical, statistical property value loss couldn't answer to an individual real-life example property. Another witness who studied real property values using the local real estate industry in the Streeter Caiuta Ridge thinks the conditions are right for property value loss on the example-specific property. Topic five, Carlock losing schools. Yesterday, it's, it wasn't yesterday, in Sunday's Panograph on 3/15/2015 was an interesting article. The headline it read, "Carlock Community Fighting for School", says, "What they acknowledge appears to be an uphill battle, keeping a school in Carlock, population 552 by a whole of district. Enrollment in Carlock has dipped from 132 in 2010-11 to 125 in 2012-13 to 115 this year. Supporters say the hill opened houses, produced brochures, and used every communication effort at their disposal, from telephone to social media to word of mouth to broadcast Carlock lost families. Another man worries if our department would struggle to attract enough members and eventually the town would fade away without the school. What happened to Carlock in 2010?" Here's Carlock on the USGS satellite map. Here's Carlock right here, and here is the White Oak Energy Center surrounded. Maybe you see the red dots. Uh, from the USGS, um, turbine map, it says, USGS White Oak Wind Energy. Here we are. The USGS says, White Oak Wind Energy Center became operational in 2011, and I quote the article, "Enrollment in Carlock has dipped from 132 in 2010-11 to 125 in 2012-13 to 115 this year." This is my presentation on some home abandonments. Exhibit one. Home abandonments are not very detailed. There are many tales of homes being abandoned due to wind turbines on the internet. But I will only be discussing with two people that I personally have had contact with, so I know they exist and have really worked through this. Ted Harkey in Champaign, Illinois, and Kerry Schindler there at Northern Michigan. I'm gonna skip a lot of the Ted Harkey talk here, since he's been here and I know he's before he came. So, Ted Harkey, I've met Ted in person, I've heard him tell a story, I've driven by his house, I've had numerous phone conversations with him. I've only known Ted since he abandoned his home, I did not know him before. He traveled to Louisiana to warn us about the potential dangers of wind farms. Here's a picture of his house that I actually took when I drove by his house, um, one fall summer day. Fall summer day. Anyway, he, he does admit, but is well-maintained, it's not an abandoned house falling apart. Um, the next four slides are about what Ted made, some of his experiences, or his words on mine. I'm just gonna skip over these, we've seen them all before. Hey, ones and Mr. Kerry Schindler there. Okay, I haven't personally met Kerry, I've just had conversations on Facebook. I looked him up after hearing witnesses discuss him. Kerry was very interesting for me. During the course of our speaking meetings, while he was being discussed at our proceedings, he moved away from his house and his wind turbines to his new house, that's not near the turbines. So, I was a witness via Facebook to him leaving his home for a year. It felt very personal to me. Internet is a small world. Here's Kerry's old house, we've all seen that picture before. I'm just gonna go ask you these real quick. These are just some of Kerry's old Facebook posts that I, I read through the whole thing just to watch his story unfold. This is from December 29th, 2013. He posted, "Turbines are COVID related, so pounding the house with noise and vibration. Tonight is a, your pressure..." Mr. Chairman. There again, it's a witness who isn't here. So, you can't read stuff off websites.
Oh.
How can I read the website up here?
Mr. Slade. Can you, can you remind me here, this picture, the previous picture with Kerry's old house on the previous slide? That picture has been previously submitted by one party or the other.
It was, uh, I believe Dr. Punch did, uh, discuss it, every serves.
Yeah, and I think Mr. K in my head as well.
Yeah, it was two of the, uh, the CLC witnesses, I believe. That was the picture of his house, none of this stuff was submitted. Yeah. I'm willing to skip these Facebook posts if I find them here.
All right. Let's skip the Facebook over.
Okay. Basically, he talks about moving out of his house and finally moving into his new house. Some sadness coming back in those boxes of his old house, moving to the new house. But quite happy to get to his new house. So, here's the more interesting part. Real life versus speculation. At the ZDA meeting on 2/23, about 40 minutes into the video, on Facebook, I had been observing Kerry Schindler going through his lack of sleep from wind turbines. While discussing Mr. Schindler, Mr. Slade asked Mr. Punch, do you know what sleep apnea is, is perceived to be symptoms? And essentially, why do Mr. Schindler's symptoms could be from sleep apnea and not turbines? I had messaged Mr. Schindler. The next slide was this conversation.
Same judgment, Mr. Chairman.
This is a conversation I had with somebody that I think is very relevant to the project. Mr. Schindler...
Mr. Schindler would have because of funny conversation.
He doesn't have to do this, we can talk about a conversation I had online with someone. This is a conversation where you were basically diagnosing him as having sleep apnea, while I was over here texting him, and he says, "I do not have..." Mr. Chairman, I ask for...
Let's go ahead and exclude this conversation.
Put it in the paper.
Can I just quote, quote Mr. Harkey about his new house? It resolves a story that was being discussed in this area. Everybody wonders what the Kerry Schindler is up to, right?
Yes, of course.
Those are really terrible.
It's viable to this hearing? The statements you're gonna make?
Yes, well, I'd... I would like to read basically from this line down. It's no different than the rest of the picture.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I mean...
Herefore, the quote that Mr. Blaser keeps citing too, about Ms. Burwood's question, was as to a written statement, he doesn't read that part, but as to a written statement, not a conversation that someone had. We've had numerous witnesses testify about conversations they had, that was my objection on the first night. Just understand the rules. Let's not change the rules because Mr. Blaser doesn't like what the testimony is about to be. I also think that, in this case...
All right, Mr. Blaser, hold on. We've excluded the Facebook conversation. We're not changing the rules, we're trying to stay with our rules. Just, just move on past this Facebook conversation.
Okay, well, I guess my point, my one remark here is, we left this with Mr. Blaser basically saying this man had sleep apnea, which was discussing this man, okay? And so I have an answer to this question from the man Mr. Blaser was discussing. So I would like to read how his outcome came, he's moved away from wind turbines.
All right, Mr. Blaser wasn't a witness. Is Mr. Schindler a doctor in his own?
I am, okay?
The record reflects that he's a 53-year-old with those foot health issues on here. All right, so he can't self-diagnose his symptoms. So, well, okay, let's, why don't we just move on? Otherwise, we're gonna start this whole exhibit, and we're gonna move you on. Please.
Good one. Okay, so in summary, I'm sure there are many more cases of people who have had to leave their homes. I've been a witness to two people who have had to leave their homes. That has proved to me that this can happen. Anyone can contact me or either of these individuals, who'd be glad to share their story. Or you can view Kerry's old Facebook posts and watch his story or whatever, as it happens. Exhibit seven. Move you on, exhibit seven. Okay, now, if I'm not reading IPCB witness who testified tonight, I'm gonna read some of the other websites. This is from the IPCB website fact, the Illinois Pollution Control Board website fact. How do I file a noise complaint with the board? If the board receives... If the board receives an informal complaint alleging noise pollution, the board forwards an informal complaint to the Illinois EPA. Illinois EPA, however, no longer has the resources to operate a noise program. Accordingly, Illinois EPA is no longer investigating alleged noise pollution. As with Illinois EPA no longer runs a noise program, it's suggested you consider reporting your noise concerns to the local police or health department. Local authorities may provide you with guidance or take steps on their own to enforce the state's noise laws. The board, as the state's environmental board and rulemaking body, has no investigative powers. The board notes that anyone can file an informal complaint, in other words, alleging noise violations under the EPA Act and board regulations. As with any citizen enforcement action towards the board, you as a complaintant would have to gather evidence of proof of violations in your land. You may want to consult the act, the board's procedural rules, and board's noise regulations. In summary, there is no government enforcement on IPCB violations once the turbines are built. The nearby homeowners would have to gather the evidence, and as we saw in California Ridge to find a state, we needed an applicant at difficulty separating the leak from the shaft. Without cooperation from the wind farm in terms of wind turbine power output and selectively turning turbines on and off, this would be an impossible task, and so it's virtually impossible to prove IPCB non-compliance once turbines are built. Okay, this is my Pleasant Bridge sound study. Exhibit three. Why did I do this? Both the originally filed Pleasant Bridge application and the amended application appear for the IPCB limits to me. Their use of rounding, overlooking in the middle of houses and not property lines, and limiting the shown data to the 107 worst receptors didn't satisfy them. When the applicant was told during ZDA hearings that rounding down wasn't acceptable, they proposed 20 more LNTE blades to fix the problem, but didn't show their work or give any results. We have no data or contour maps to help evaluate how people living nearby may be affected. To clarify, from currently proposed 24 LNTE wind farm that is on the table, we have not been given any sound study model results, or data, or proof of compliance. What they were looking at, the original Pleasant Bridge application in August 2014 showed a table of predicted octave band noise levels rounded to the nearest integer at the 107 worst receptors for the GE 1.79-100 turbines. Pleasant Bridge Amendment October 2014 added the same data for the GE 1.72-103 turbines, and removed turbine 90, and gave revised data for GE 1.79-100 turbines, all rounded to the nearest integer. In January 2015, Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 16A gave a list of 24 100-metre turbines and 20 103-metre turbines that need LNTE blades to, I quote the applicant, "Ensure that predicted noise levels do not exceed 41 dB in the 1,000 Hz octave band or 47 dB in the 500 Hz octave band without rounding. With this, levels in all other bands are well below their respective criteria." That was what applicants were. No new data was given, so all they did here was they listed the needed LNTE blades and not give out the needed sound numbers. January 21st, ZDA, uh, January 21st, ZDA meeting, Mr. Griffin for the county, I believe, asked the applicant for the predicted octave band noise levels to the nearest 10th. I haven't been able to find that follow-up exhibit. So I ran the numbers myself. I'm a professional computer programmer. We write computer programs that people use to solve problems. I wrote a C++ program to implement ISO 9613-2. ISO 9613-2 is a relatively simple algorithm, not many lines of code needed. Compared to the large, maniac-type projects that I usually work on, considering it took a few days, it's really simple stuff. I verified that I matched all Pleasant Bridge 107 receptors, 1,000 Hz octave band, for the GE 1.79-100 data within one decimal. So my numbers matched up and finished perfectly. The code calculated entire 2,000 to 2,000 images in a few minutes, that's how simple it is. So while I did this, I had to buy the ISO 9613 specs and study them, so I learned a lot about them, so I'm gonna give you a quick rundown here. ISO 9613-2 is nothing more than approximation, approximation, and to make a math of a very complex problem simple. It's very similar to counting seconds between lightning striking thunder and divided by five to figure miles away. Obviously, they skipped a lot of details and specifics, but they gave a good enough answer. ISO 9613 has nominal errors just because of what it is, a simplification. They essentially say, "Take all of this math, blah blah blah, and approximate it using the similar math on the table look up." Of course, there is error. It's closely estimated very specific conditions, which they described. We are using a delta height of almost 8 metre, which is above the recommended 3 metres max, and using distances of miles and not just 1,000 metres or less. Table is shown below. So how does ISO 9613-2 relate to Pleasant Bridge? The applicant used ISO 9613-2 to model or predict the worst-case sound levels at each sound receptor by using the worst-case conditions as inputs to the 9613, the most conservative values of all, for any inputs to the delta. I would call using the ISO 9613-2 to model the worst-case conditions, IWCC for short. From the Pleasant Bridge application sound study, they quote, "Model results are expected to be higher than the actual noise levels expected at a given receptor." And that follows from the range model, which is, by using the worst-case conditions, you would always expect that to be higher than what you actually measured. Let me clarify this. Measuring, you know, predicting and doing math is one thing, and what you did in the real world is another. Here's a real-world example of how a worst-case condition prediction relates real-life measurements, just to show the kind of numbers we're talking about and how they vary. We just need two pieces, a validated measurement and a mob. The puzzle piece number one is the measurement, the measurement is from Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 48, noise level compliance analysis for the California Ridge project, specifically monitor location prime two, which includes wind speed measurements, prime one and that include wind conditions. Puzzle piece number two, the mob, using my ISO 9613 worst-case conditions, I modeled the predicted sound in 1,000 Hz for prime two should be 39.8 decimals. So the readings found in prime two should be 39.8 decimals, worst case, according to the IWCC predictions. Here's a chart from Inverge's California Ridge study that they gave us, which is the measured noise levels after filtering out all the measurements that didn't meet certain criteria. What you have here on the horizontal axis is the ground wind speed, and what you have here on the vertical axis is the measured decimals, noise level. What I did is I drew in this 39.8 decimal line. According to the worst-case condition models, you should never see any points above this line. There aren't. The Inverge makes a good point, which is according to the Illinois Pollution Control Board, you can't even consider readings when wind speed is over 5 metres per second. So this vertical line right here, they say, "Forget all these readings here, because they're over 5 metres per second." I think I'm losing my gears here. So they say, "We can just ignore these readings because they're over 5 metres per second." If you look here, cross sort of a line connecting all these, and you look at the 5 metres per second here, you'll see there's a variance in here where clearly, based on linear interpolation here, putting a line through here, there's obviously gonna be some points in here that are below this line and aren't below 5 metres per second. So when somebody does calculations and say, "This is what will be your worst case," this is a hypothetical measure. Okay, so, off that subject, we move on to Pleasant Bridge citing history. In August, August 20th, they filed the application for low-noise trailing edge blades. In October 15th, they filed supplemental application, still had four low-noise trailing edge blades, plus now they listed the 103-metre blades. Some unknown data before November 18th, they updated 11 LNTE blades. This comes from the Hanker testimony on November 18th. He said, "We got to a point on this project, and we were a little bit over the noise limits, so that's when we started adding in these turbines that were lower, the low-noise trailing edge blades. Initially, we found out that even four of them were turbines, that I believe we went over where those were last night. Then at one point, I said to the project, 'You know, we're actually one or two tenths of a decimal over the limit in one of the bands.' And they said, 'Well, what does it take to get rid of that?' And we said, 'Another set of LNTEs.' And then Inverge said, 'Fine, let's do that.'" On January 21st, 2015, Mr. Griffin, looking at the four LNT data, says, "To Inverge, I would ask," this is a ZDA meeting, "I would ask the applicant, although I understand your position, was that it was appropriate to round now, I would ask that the applicant to assume that that position was not agreed to by the applicant, and identify what the solution or remedy would be, so that the model would demonstrate compliance of all receptors." Mr. Blaser replied, "We've also marked as Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 16A, this would be the untitled list. The current list shows, I think, four of the 103 turbines with LNTEs and 11 of the 100 turbines without LNTEs. This new list, which I marked as 16A, shows 20 of the 103s and 4 of the 100s." This is reactionary citing, doing just what you need to do to stay on the ragged edge of the legally allowed IPCB limits. No room for error or unknowns. It is certainly not designed to minimize impacts on a nearby non-participate. So summary of my ISO 9613 experience here. As we see from the graph of real-world data, the California Ridge appliance study shows that the predicted ISO 9613 worst-case condition levels are within the boundaries of what actually is measured, but it certainly isn't the hardest ever to overcome locally ever seen. Placing turbines right up to the ragged edge of high-perceiving limits, using the ISO 9613 worst-case conditions, approximation as a prediction model is probably not the best method of turbine citing. And that is exactly what happened here at the Pleasant Bridge. So here are some contour maps I made to give a little more than the 107 data points that Inverge submitted, and to give data points for the 24 LNTE configuration. So I generated some contour maps to visualize the following, all in 1,000 Hz octave band. The original, which I'll be showing shortly, the original Pleasant Bridge application's four LNTE citing, the Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 16A, 24 LNTE citing, the California Ridge project citing specifically to compare to Ted Harkey's abandoned home, and a map of all the homes with IPCB worst-case condition predicted of those at or worse than Harkey's. Here's a legend that will be in all the following slides. All my data edited from the 1,000 Hz octave band, all contours show that data. A black circle is a house, a white circle is a turbine, and a white circle with purple green is a low-noise trailing edge turbine. Note, for the contour colors, I did not round on 41.499 to 41.0. Anything over 41 is red. Yellow is within one decimal of any limit, green is within two decimals, and so on and so forth. You see from the number line here, the closed circle means that number is not included. So in the red, you see it does not include 41, includes everything above. A yellow does not include 40, but includes up to and including 41 decimals. So here's the original Pleasant Bridge application from 820 with four LNTE blades. You can see there are quite a few points clearly over the IPCB limit of 41 decimals. Pointer doesn't work, but you can see up here in the middle of this section here, there's a bunch down around here, that house there, these houses here, there's quite a few homes that are clearly over the limit. Here, I zoomed in on a few of the worst areas. So this next slide is the Pleasant Bridge project with the 24 low-noise trailing edge blades. This is, yes, this is from Pleasant Bridge exhibit 16A, the list of the LNTE locations. You'll see that it is a lot better. There are houses clearly smacked in the middle of red as you saw before. In this area up here is now better. I'll show you some zoomed-in observations here. Here they are at the end, you can see. Now, these black circles are a radius around the marker I had on the home. They don't signify any property line or anything like that. It's just a, if I read the mark just on the home, it would be too small for a house, so. It just signifies in the center of that black circle is a home, the center of the home. I'm using the turbine data from the California Ridge project or its nearby sites, I then generated the sound contours for the California Ridge project in order to get the number for Ted Harkey. And here it is, this is the entire project. And here it is zoomed in on Harkey's home. My calculations on his home, the exact center of it, give a 39.16 decimal worst-case conditions in the 1,000 hertz octave band, which is in the green range, you can see by the purple arrow. So here, this is a map of the Pleasant Bridge project. This one does have turbine 90, which is, a turbine was located down here. All the houses with the triangles around them are houses that are the same range as Ted Harkey's house. If you break down the numbers in terms of range, I found seven houses that my calculations say are over 41 decimals. Fifty-five houses are zero or one decimals below the limit and 52 are one to two decimals below. So my final summary. The original Pleasant Bridge application with four LNTE blades was clearly over IPCV limits for any cases. My calculations showed this, and Hanker also stated this. The 24 LNTE blade sighting is still slightly over IPCV limits according to my ISO 9613 worst-case condition model. For the 24 LNTE blade sighting, we have noted that we stray from compliance with IPCV limits from the applicant. The current Pleasant Bridge sighting is reactionary to stay on the ragged edge of the legally allowed IPCV limits. Ted Harkey's abandoned house is only two decimals under the IPCV 1,000 hertz nighttime limit range, which is green in my graphs. With the current 24 LNTE sighting and my calculations, there are 114 homes in the both Pleasant Bridge and Farm in that same range or worse. Does the applicant see more focus on staying just under legal limits, protecting themselves, or minimizing effects on nearby families who were here first, protecting us? Okay, and this is my last exhibit here, exhibit 3. Okay, this slide shows about waivers and property line violations. Accounting requirements on setbacks is listed below. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I underlined all the cases where it says the word waived. Right here, may waive. The county may waive the setback requirement. The county property owner may waive the setback requirement. Here's the accounting requirements on the noise where I underlined waived. As you can see, it doesn't appear anywhere in here. It says, "Noise levels from each WEX or WEX project shall be in compliance with applicable state pollution control board regulations. The applicant, through the use of a qualified professional as part of the sighting approval application process, shall appropriately demonstrate compliance with the noise requirements of this section. Thereafter, the WEX project shall be in compliance with the applicable IPCV regulations throughout the entire operational period of the WEX project." So waived. There are three things that can be waived by participants in the setback section, which are all distances. There are zero things that can be waived by participants in the noise levels section. Is a participant home allowed to waive the noise levels? They are allowed to waive some setbacks up to a certain limit. But where is the word waived in the noise section? Is there permission to waive noise limits? Okay, on to some IPCV regulations. This is section 91.102 of the National Protection Control Board Regulations. Sound emitted to Class A land, which is where we got all these 41 decimal numbers that we're trying to stay on there. If you read this, it says, "Except as provided elsewhere in this part, no person shall cause or allow the emission of sound during nighttime hours from any property line noise source located on any Class A near sea land to any receiving Class A land which exceeds any allowable octave band sound pressure level specified in the following table missing border when measured at any point within such receiving Class A land. Provided, however, that no measurement of sound pressure levels shall be made less than 25 foot from such property line noise source." So basically, it's not just the house. IPCV says, "When measured at any point within such receiving Class A land." That means you have to be below IPCV levels at any point within the Class A land, not just at the center of the house. The applicant is only provided with his level estimates for the center of the home and only for the 107 worst receptors. They need to determine what all those Class A land and then show compliance. Contour maps. The following images are contour maps showing some single-family homes in the area of the road and maintained yard measures around each home, which is my rough estimate of what Class A land is. Each home also lists the sound receptor and participation status from the Pleasant Bridge application. I have this disclaimer. I did not look up the legal description for each parcel or survey then. This is just my estimate of the Class A area around the homes. I used the latest APCE 1179100 sighting with 24 LNTE blades and did bring in the turbine 90. The colors on here are the same as before. Red is over 41 decimal IPCV limit from 1,000 hertz octave band. Yellow is zero or decimals below it. Green is one to two decimals below the limit. Each ridge is about 1,200 foot square. So here it is, .2219, which is on 438. You can see that in the, we have, this is 1,200 foot square. We got his property line where he goes, separated from the field. A little less than half of his property is over the legal limits. Center of his house is over the legal limits. A portion of his house here is just at the legal limit, I would say. Here's .1262. This is his property. This is house completely in the legal, over the limit. Here's .185, the house, property is over half inside is red. The house is completely in the limit. Here's .87, R, sound receptor R 245. Half of the house is in the red. Depending on where you place this point, this house would come up as either okay or not okay. Here's .R313, the house is completely in the red. Most of the property is in red. Here's .263, R 216. A portion of the house with the marker is in the red. A portion of the property is in the red. Depending on where you place the marker, you could make the claim that this house was illegal and not over the limit. R 244, who's a participant? Half of his property is in the red, his house is in the red. R 60, a portion of his property in the red, most of his house is in the red. R 92, most of his property is in the red, most of his house is in the red. I think all of his house is in the red. R 243, depending on where you place the marker, you could say the house is over the limit or at the limit. But the property is definitely over the limit. R 754. My own disrespect is not that. R 754, you know, depending on where you place the marker, you could argue the house is over the legal limit or not over the legal limit. But his property clearly is. .501, half the property is in the legal limit. House is fair, it's not, it's outside the legal limit. R 311, the house is arguably over the legal limit, but some of his property is not. This house here is surrounded, turned on from both sides, so to give a little breath at night, it will be enclosed by the turbines. R 102, part of his property is in red, his house is not in the red. But barely. So summary. More homes and property lines appear to be over IPCV limits when you look at the contour maps rather than just the point in the middle of the home. Participants may not be able to legally waive noise levels. On the zoning ordinance, it says, "The applicant, through the use of a qualified professional as part of the sighting approval application process, shall appropriately demonstrate compliance with noise requirements of this section." The applicant has not demonstrated IPCV compliance. Okay, that was my last exhibit, I'll just add some closing statements here. This is applying all my exhibits here to conditions for Livingston County special needs permit. Is this project consistent in all respects with the Livingston County comprehensive plan and Livingston County zoning ordinance? No, in regards to comprehensive plan, one of the primary uses of this land is for special needs for people living here who want to enjoy their quiet countryside and are currently in the state of sleep at night. They were here first, they have the right to that. Shadow flicker up to 30 hours a year and 45 or 46 DVA turbine noise that we put into their homes 24/7 are new pollution sources. In regards to Livingston County zoning ordinance, the applicant has not provided data to ensure that they met the IPCV regulations for all time courses of any properties. The sighting leaves no room for error. So once in operation, there's a good chance they will be over the limits and there's no agreement in place for fairly determining IPCV compliance. Nearby homeowners, especially not participants, shouldn't have to be responsible for IPCV compliance tests. But that's how it stands now because the IPCV and National EPA do not enforce this. What is the cost to run properly, proper or legally binding IPCV compliance testing? Will the applicant cooperate with the right necessary turbine output data during independent test? Even if IPCV limits are provably exceeded once operational, what is the recourse? Does anyone like the county have the authority to shut them down? Now is the time to figure stuff like this out and act on this bill. Part two of the special needs permit will not be detrimental to or at danger of public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general health welfare. As shown in my exhibit, this is way too populated a area to put these large turbines in. With the large population, odds will be very high that some families will be negatively affected. 114 homes with predicted tech equal or worse than Ted Harkey's abandoned home. There will be 836 homes within 1 and 1/2 miles of the turbine if this project is approved as proposed. If you assume 2 and 1/2 people per household, that is over 2,000 people, a good percentage of whom may be negatively affected. The applicant has admitted that they turned off the turbines so that Harkey's could sleep at night. And then Harkey's would fully cooperate, cooperatively stop hearing it, eventually causing Harkey's to abandon their home. The applicant's expert stated there will be 45 or 46 DVA on some homes, which is not described as quiet and that some people won't be annoyed and their sleep disturbed. They have not ever said this turbine is over quiet and not bother anyone. The only sound they're making claiming to do make is that they will meet IPCV limits, which are not enforced and which their experts have testified meeting IPCV limits does not prevent noise compliance. They have provided no plans or agreements to address the four of those sleep issues in the turbines. No agreements, no promises to give relief, no promises to make it right. Condition five, will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity where uses already permitted or substantially reduce the value of a made-in property. The constant noise in these turbines will permeate the entire region, reducing people's enjoyment of the outdoors. If you look at the sound contours that I generated, there is almost no space between the footprint that is over or within four decimals of the IPCV limits in the 1,000 hertz range. People may enjoy the night sky, but they're leaking their lights to push their way. Kids may not be able to play in yards and reach bigger homes than they used to, which will now lie within the wind, the turbine blades, and air. For property values, if the turbines aren't good, we know our properties historically go up over time. But one property value has been told me that my specific house would probably remain unvalued and the applicant's expert couldn't tell me that it won't be now, even though he had vital studies that showed a low statistical loss. The turbine setbacks only 550 foot to adjacent property lines, so a significant area of neighboring properties will now be restricted to crop farming purposes only and before they could easily have been converted to any uses of the neighboring property owner desire. Number six, will not be ordered to grow, development and improvement of surrounding properties for those uses permitted in the zoning district. Once this project is built, people will not be building new homes here. How many new homes are built in wind farms? The number of people who live within this area or be reused suggests to affect home prices. We've all seen the petition of over 2,000 people in the area who do not want to live near them. We have proof in the school attendance records in towns such as Carlock and Odell showing that attendance has dropped sharply since the turbines came. Even prospective people considering moving to nearby towns on February 4th, May 1st, wants to see the real life surrounding the towns at night and the icehores on the horizon during the day. Moving to town for setbacks from 1 and 1/2 miles now to 1 and 1/2 mile is the very definition of immediate growth and development. Sadly, I think that this project is already damaged people's confidence in buying property for development in this area and will continue to until this project is denied and zoning laws are updated to better protect homeowners. Thank you.
Any questions? Local school districts, communities, families, government entities. All right, Mr. Blazer, third little question. Mr. Slako, where'd you get your information about the number of turbines at the California Ridge project?
I think from websites and I went through and I actually clicked on everyone and measured the number of turbines matched up with the summary. I think it was on the website.
I see. On whose website?
I think Inverge.
So somewhere you found that it's the...
Oh, for the, wait, which one is it?
California Ridge.
Yeah, yeah.
So you came to the conclusion that there's 132 turbines in the entire project?
I believe so.
That's your exhibit two?
Yes, page five. No, page one, yes.
Page one, 10 turbines in Vermillion County and 22 turbines in Champagne County, that's all of 132. And you got that somewhere in your book?
Well, that's... I'm not sure where I got that number, but then I went through and backed up the project. I went through and clicked on windmills, you know, until I found all the windmills and made sure that I matched the numbers from the webpage or information I had that told me there was 110 in Vermillion County and 22 in Champagne. So maybe I missed some. But I know I didn't click on anything that wasn't a windmill.
I see.
What are you saying? What am I saying?
I believe it was Mr. Harkey with dollars. It's 134 turbines, 100 in Vermillion, 34 in Champagne. By the way, where did you get your figures of the number of residences within particular distances in Vermillion and Champagne for the California Ridge project?
And once again, I zoomed in on Google Maps, went through every section, took a click. And then I ran a program. I exported the map, KML4 map. I wrote a program, said, "Import the KML4 map" and the terminals, turbine loads, all of them. Pr, turbine for every home, calculated distance outputs into a little spreadsheet.
KML is a Google Earth or Google Maps store?
Yes, XML-based text file.
Did you use GIS?
Oh, it's an XML-based text file from Google Earth, yes.
Did you, did anyone confirm with actual GIS? Did you, in any way confirm with actual GIS data? That's all I have. Mr. Luthen, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one. Why, you said, and then you said, why did you exclude turbine?
In the supplemental application, turbine 90 is no longer listed. I think in the chart it shows the octavant sound levels, oh no, in the chart it shows the UTM, GPS coordinates for each turbine, it was no longer listed. And some county board meeting, I saw Andrew, and I asked him what happened to turbine 90, and he said we couldn't fit connections to it, so we took it out.
Anybody in the audience question for Mr. Schleyel? Anybody out there? Anybody? DCA, Comstat, County Council, some questions? All right, anything for Mr. Schleyel? All right, I'll just call these other meetings that put here at Mr. Schleyel, Warden Gillett or Anna Fowwell, either of those individuals here, maybe?
It's just Mr. Chamberlain's understanding, I don't know what was in that.
All right. So what that means is, we've got nine individuals left. We'll again call their names on the next meeting, at the next meeting on the 21st at 6:30 at the courthouse. We'll call those names if they're there to testify, that's our opportunity, since they have not, since they're not here this evening, we understand, but that will be their final opportunity as far as presenting evidence and testimony. We'll take, provided there's time, we'll try and get all the, all the evidence taken in at that meeting. We'll work through a few other administrative things, I, there's a motion out there that we need to sort through, dealing with the testimony or some evidence, so we'll sort through that at that meeting. I guess then, we'll decide whether, whether we need to have a meeting on the 23rd, that would be the next one. If we decide that there's no testimony that we need to take at that meeting on the 23rd, we'll probably vote at the 27th or 28th to have meetings one day after the other, and We'll leave the door open certainly for the 23rd. Just, I want to stress to everybody in the audience, if you know any of those individuals that actually were previously called and they were not here to testify this evening, let us know the importance of coming on the 21st. If we make it through that list and there's nobody else, we will close that portion of the hearing down, so we can't continue to let that linger. So, I'm sure the 21st, 6:30 at the historic courthouse. I guess with that, it's good times, early night for us all, quarter after nine, I need a motion or a dissent. It's a motion, I guess.